Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 6, 2024 Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Let the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. A notice of the 2024 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and provided here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents, plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete applications are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of Planning Board members and also boarding township professionals, please.
Vice Chair Peas and Mr. Smith and Mr. Vander Vliet are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
Here.
Committee Member Lepani?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
Present.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We have a busy agenda or packed agenda. First up, we have consideration of the number of meeting minutes. First up, November 9, 2023. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Eligible members of Radowitz, Lepani, and Sarachi.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Radowitz, you have Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next meeting minutes are December 14, 2023.
Scobbo and Sarachi.
We're not ending the tie, Ron.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I guess I gotta step down from the chair to sit. I don't have to step down?
You can just speak the second.
Okay, I will make the second. I just throw these curveballs, so. Any discussion between us, Ron? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, February 1, 2024.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Lepani, Mr. Chicorelli, and the Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion from today's? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And finally, meeting minutes of March 7, 2024.
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Vitale, Mr. Depp, Mr. Lepani, Mr. Chicorelli, and the Chair.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. There's a second. Discussion from the dais. Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next up, our consideration of resolutions. First up is CP East Brunswick, Inc., Seisner, File Number 20-PB-05-MSPV. It was a 2024 extension.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Lepani, Mr. Chicorelli, and the Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion from the dais. Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the Petrox Liquor Resolution be carried one week to next week. I'm waiting for feedback from Mr. O'Grognick's colleague.
Okay, can I do that by acclamation or can I just?
I just carry it.
Are you just gonna carry it? Okay, we will carry the.
Put it on the June 13 agenda.
Okay, so we will carry it to next week's agenda, the Petrox Liquors, Inc., Resolution, File 23-PB-19-MSPV. Okay, we do not have Planning Board business. I'm gonna go out of order just a little bit because we have a few ordinances for consideration. Mr. Coys, I'm gonna turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, good evening, Planning Board and public. First on the agenda is Ordinance 2024-07. I was gonna start there, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
Pursuant to the municipal land use law, the Township Committee has referred Ordinance 2024-07 to the Planning Board for formal comment regarding consistency with the Township Master Plan and any other matters that the Board seems appropriate. The ordinance was introduced by the Township Committee at their May 14 meeting. Ordinance 2024-07 proposes to replace approximately 8,000 square feet of unbuilt retail space with two two-story residential buildings to consist of 24 total residential units, 18 of which are market rate, and six are affordable housing, and a park with a playground. It is going to be on the Township Committee. The official hearing is going to be on June 11.
Okay. And just as a reminder, we don't formally approve or deny ordinances. It's just here for us to discuss if there's any recommendations back to the Township Committee for any potential changes. So we are a non-binding vote, so.
And also, as a point of reference, with the number of ordinances that you have here this evening, we have added a lot of language to the whereas's that give a lot of background and context as to why the ordinance is up for consideration. So if you needed a place to take a look to understand some of the history of why this ordinance is being proposed, we have it within the ordinance itself and the whereas clauses.
Okay. Yeah. Any comments from the dais? Eric, you look like.
This is just for the representation of the board. This is an ordinance that carries out a conversation the board had with the Hillsborough 206 Holdings applicant that puts into effect the last piece of the puzzle related to the development of the site.
Okay. So do we take these one at a time? Or can we? Okay. So.
Everyone's eligible.
Okay. So anyone would like to make a motion just to send it to the Township Committee as is?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Mr. Coys, next one.
Okay, Ordinance 2024-08. It's to amend Attachment 8 Development Application Guidelines and to add Attachment 12 Subdivision and/or Site Plan Green Development Checklist to the Hillsborough Development Regulations. Again, pursuant to the municipal land use law, the Township Committee has referred Ordinance 2024-08 to the Planning Board for formal comment regarding consistency with the Township Master Plan and any other matter the Board may seems appropriate. The ordinance was introduced at the Township Committee on May 14. In accordance with the Green Development Checklist action from Sustainable Jersey, Ordinance 2024-08 proposes to require that an applicant for subdivision or site plan complete the Green Development Checklist as part of the required documents to be submitted to the Planning Board or Board of Adjustment. While completion of the Green Development Checklist by applicants is mandatory, compliance with the checklist items is not a condition of approval. This is a data collection process that provides an opening to discuss municipal green design objectives with the development community. The data collection and discussion could lead to future incorporation of green design elements into the municipal site plan and subdivision ordinances, and municipalities looking to advance green development components in their communities are encouraged to update their master plan to incorporate these features. Again, this is scheduled for a formal public hearing on June 11.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the dais? Motion to send to the Township Committee without further changes?
Motion so moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Last one.
For completion of the hat trick, this is the third one for you hockey fans out there. Ordinance 2024-09, amend the Hillsborough Development Regulations Ordinance to include standards for supply, service, equipment, EVSE, and make-ready parking spaces. Again, this was introduced at the May 14 meeting and is now here before the Planning Board pursuant to the municipal land use law. In accordance with the Make Your Town Electric Vehicle Friendly Action of Sustainable Jersey, Ordinance 2024-09 proposes to adopt the statewide EV ordinance into the Township's Land Use and Regulations Ordinance. While the model ordinance is already law, adopting it in the land use and regulations for the township allows a place for professionals to locate the standards and cite them. The state law does allow municipalities to make changes in the reasonable standards for all new EVSE and make-ready parking spaces section. This proposed ordinance proposes to remove the requirement to paint the markings curb cuts green and to require the charging pictograph symbol due to maintenance concerns. Instead, a sign is required to identify the parking space. The state has published FAQ section on their website on the subject and has noted that in the future, the model ordinance will be updated to provide clarification on the subject. So basically, what the town is proposing is to adopt the statewide regulations, but just with the minor change of not requiring the green paint. That was something that was put into the model ordinance, and what we have found even as a township, as we've had different kind of parking for our bus location over at the promenade, it used to require that all the parking spaces be painted green. We have found that that practice is extremely difficult and challenging to keep up, and so that is the only change that we're recommending from the model ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And again, the official hearing is going to be on June 11 at the Township Committee for potential adoption.
Okay. Comments, discussion from the dais? Okay. Mayor, a motion to send to Township Committee as is?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Depp?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And I will move back to business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to provide a comment to Township Committee, I'm going back. Planning Board, please come to mic, state your name and address for the record, and please refrain from any comments directly and directly regarding warehouse applications.
My name is George Messina, 5 Holy Road. I live in Green Hill neighborhood. Back in October, we were giving a nice presentation.
Raise the mic up a little higher.
How's that? Okay. Back in October, we were giving a nice presentation in our neighborhood about the flood relief plan and also an access road that was going to be built so we can escape our neighborhood when it's flooded. With hurricane seasons coming up now, I'm wondering if there's any movement on this so I can plan to get out of my neighborhood if there's any floods. Has anything been done on this?
Since I was there, I'll answer that question. So we took the recommendations, and we still have to go through to look at the feasibility of actually doing the road, whether DEP, EPA, and that road is a viable alternative. So to answer your question, doubt anything will happen this year, but it is still something we're considering.
I know the priority is going to be 206 because everybody's priority is 206.
That's not my priority. I don't, that's the state. That's not me.
I understand, but if you live in Hillsborough, it's everybody's priority to get 206 finished. But this has just been dragging on. I've been here for almost 40 years, and I'm just tired. Everybody in the neighborhood is tired, so I'd just appreciate it if you see the future somehow.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna move on to this evening's applications and public hearings. Bernstein, you wanna preface the time allocations?
Well, let's see with time allocation. First two applications will be Toll Brothers and Campus Associates for extinctions. Once they are concluded, we will move into specialty assays. That will come to an end at around 8:45 for the break for the Board, and then after the break, we will move on to Western Road. So if specialty assays is not completed, we'll put it on for another night. You know, we'll take a night for Mr. O'Grognick. I'm sure he'll be happy to give up one. And that's the current plan.
Okay, thank you. So first up is Toll Brothers, RBG backslash enclave, File 21-PB-10S-MS backslash SP, Block 183, Lot 38.01, otherwise commonly known as 201 Hamilton Road, and also Block 183.01, Lot 1 on Hamilton Road. The applicant is seeking a one-year extension for preliminary and final major subdivision as part of the approvals previously granted by this Board, and it was memorialized in a resolution June 30 of 2022. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Extinctions have been granted.
Oh, right, okay.
Twice this year. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hoff is taking up permanent residency over this.
Yes, thank you. I always love coming up here. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Richard Hoff, the Law Firm of Visgar Hoff, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Toll Brothers. I know you got a packed agenda. I will be brief. The Board will call that Toll Brothers got an approval in June of 2022 on the Royce Brook property, the lot and blocks that the Chairman just rattled off. That approval was twofold. One was a minor subdivision that took two existing lots, made them three. The plan being, one would be conveyed to Toll Brothers, who would then build a residential community consisting of 174 homes. That was the major subdivision portion of that approval granted in 2022. That has two years, and those two years have run. And as Mr. Bernstein indicated, we are asking for a one-year extension pursuant to the statute of the final pursuant to subsection A of Section 50, the MLUL. We have entitlement to three one-year extensions under that section. I'm sure the Board is familiar with it. This is the first one. I do want to also update the Board because, as Mr. Bernstein indicated, I've been here a couple times on the minor subdivision. Happy to report that we have executed the minor subdivision, and it was sent to Ms. Patches' attention earlier this week, just waiting on, Mr. Chairman, your signature and I believe Ms. Smith's signature, and once we have those, we'll be in a position to file it. So we'll be within the time limit of the last extension, which I believe took me to July 7. So we're good on the minor. We expect that to be done, the closing to happen, and then toll will move forward on the major subdivision. We need the extension because, as I've indicated previously when I've been here, the outside agency process has been slow. But we are happy to report that we have received approvals from all outside agencies, including DRCC. That was the sort of last one. We got that in their hearing on May 15. There are some sort of resolution compliance issues that we need to work out with them, recording abeesements relative to conservation areas. They won't actually issue a certificate of approval until you provide proof that they have been recorded. We're in the process of preparing those legal descriptions, preparing the documents. We will file those, get the certificate, and that will take care of that one. And we've submitted resolution compliance materials to Mr. Coys's office. It's a roll of a couple hundred pages of plans that his department, Mr. Mayhew's office, needs to go through to confirm that we've met all the conditions of this Board's approval. As this Board knows, that all takes time, but we're happy to report that the major hurdles are completed. We think realistically, in the next, you know, 30 days, we think, we would be in a position to be able to say all outside, all resolution compliance issues have been addressed, and we are ready to go. So unfortunately, that still requires an extension because we're not yet ready to go, so we're here tonight for that one-year extension.
Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect, Mr. Vander Vliet arrived at 7:25.
Welcome. So what would be the date for the extension? Is it June 30, 2025?
It would one year, usually typically from the date of the resolution, which is June 3, 2022, so it would run to June 3, 2025. Two years on the final plus the one year.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I take it back, June 2, sorry.
Okay. Any discussions from the dais? Township professionals?
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman.
Bernstein, do we need to open to public?
Basically, it's a motion to extend the resolution of approval for one year to June 3, 2025, June 2, 2025. Mr. Hoff will do what he does, and he will update us in advance of, if another extinction is necessary, before June 2, 2025.
Okay. So should we reserve your spot in May of next year?
I'm hoping we're, I'd like to say no, but I've been doing this long enough to think it's probably yes, but.
So may I have a motion for the extension as described or stated by Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members to vote on this extension are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Lepani, Mr. Chicorelli, and yourself.
Okay, our numbers are dwindling.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hopefully, we don't see you for a while.
Enjoy the summer.
Thank you, same. Okay, up next, Campus Associates LLC, File Number 20-PB-13-MSP, also extension requests. It's Block 58, Lot 1.05, commonly known as 4 Campus Drive, and the applicant is seeking a two-year extension for preliminary and final major site plan approval. See bulk variance and waivers as per approval by this Board, which was memorialized November 18, 2021.
Good evening, Mark Pulley Castro. Good to see Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bernstein, especially nice to see you. I'll be even more brief. We're looking for a two-year extension. We have all approvals, and we're here to answer any questions the Board has in connection with this application.
Okay. Board members?
I'll just ask the obvious. What is the, you have all your approvals that you said, you know, we've been two years. What is the?
It took us two years to get through resolution compliance, without pointing any fingers whatsoever, which is, I've been doing this for 34 years, highly, highly unusual. This is an affordable project. It shouldn't take that long. It did take that long, and we're ready to. We have all approvals in hand.
So you're ready to build?
We have all approvals in hand.
Any anticipated date to start build?
I can't, as Mr. Hoff warmed up the Board to this exact issue. I can't. I wish I could, but we anticipate that it will be built in the foreseeable future. It's a great project, great site.
Mr. Pulley Castro, do you believe this is going to be done by July 1 of next year?
Mr. Bernstein, we're looking for two-year extension for that reason. I just can't tell you that.
Just ask, just inquire.
I'd love to say definitively yes.
Just inquiring for other reasons.
It's a fair question. It's a fair question. I just can't commit to that.
Could we request updates during the two years?
Yeah.
Until we start, so.
Of course.
I would propose granting the two-year extension with six-month update?
Of course, agreed.
Okay.
Person or writing?
In person. This Board likes to see.
I love this Board.
I mean, you know how much Mr. Hoff loves here. I mean, it's.
I live closer than Mr. Hoff does. I know where he lives.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant two-year extension that would go to July 1 of 2025 with a six-month update in person?
July 1, 2026.
26.
A six-month update starting now, so before the end of the year, before December 31, 2024.
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Everyone eligible?
Everyone eligible. Oh, no, take it back. I apologize.
It's been around for a while.
The eligible members, I have to find my list. I just had it here.
There's four.
I put it in such a safe place, I have to find it.
Void the motion.
Void the motion, okay.
Void the motion.
No, the eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Chicorelli, you're gonna have to take back the motion, Ron.
I did.
Mr. Lepani and Mr. Sarachi.
Okay, so I'll leave it to your three to.
The four old men that are on the board?
Mm-hmm. We just call, we're just legacy.
I'm older than you.
All right, who's gonna make the motion?
I'll go ahead, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Committee Member Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
To the Board. Mr. Bernstein, thank you.
Okay, up next, Specialty Assays, Inc., File Number 23-PB-16-MSPV. Time of decision, June 30 of this year, Block 67, Lot 16, commonly known as 56 Old Camplain Road. The applicant is seeking minor site approval, see bulk variance and waiver, to construct an approximate 4,869 square foot in addition to the existing building for use as a research facility and related improvements on property located in the I-1 light industrial and RA residential agricultural zones. His application was adjourned March 14 of this year without further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, take your time.
I'm so situated. It's my first time here, very happy to be here, but just kind of trying to get the label and.
No worries. I was trying to delay as much as I could.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Dave, you want to just put this right here or?
Yeah. There you go.
Supposedly fixed our screen.
Wow.
Continue the sugar rush.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think we finally got it all squared away.
Okay, the floor is yours, councilor.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Just use, get close to the mic because.
All right, I'll sit. I usually stand.
We don't, you know, our mics aren't very good, so.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals. My name is Kara Kaczynski. I'm of the law firm of McNally, Yarros, Kaczynski &amp; Lime, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Specialty Assays Inc. And we're here with regard to the property that they've been occupying for quite some time at 56 Old Camplain Road, also known as block 67, lot 16. Now, you probably know this property pretty well. This was the subject of a number of different resolutions before this board, one in 82 and one in 2006, and those are probably the most important ones for you tonight. I have copies if the board would like to see them. But this property is approximately 1.718 acres in size, located within the boroughs I-1 light industrial and RA residential agricultural districts. As you know, the property currently contains an existing one-story Masonry Research Building, and you could see a depiction of that up on your screen, that is utilized by the applicant along with some parking and other wooded areas. This building was previously approved by the Township Planning Board, as I indicated, in 1984, and this was via Resolution 82-PB-36-SR. And that particular resolution memorializing the approval indicated that the building would be an asset to the township. Later on in 2006, via Application 06-PB-09-MSR, the Planning Board approved a firewall to create two separate businesses, specifically Moleku Wire Corp. and the applicant's specialty assays. This 2006 resolution also granted approval of a waiver from the required parking space width from the 10 feet required to nine feet, and that situation currently exists on the property and would be continued in connection with this application. As I indicated, I do have copies of both of those resolutions. I'd be happy to mark them as exhibits if the board would like to see them. They were, as I indicated, adopted by the board in 2000, I'm sorry, 1984 and 2006.
Why don't we mark the 84 as A1 and the 2006 resolution is A2?
I'll mark one. Who, I'll give you the marked copy. I'm going to give that to Mike.
Give that to Mr. Coys. He likes to get up during the meetings.
All right, and then here's copies for everybody else. That's copies for everybody else. Okay, so while we're passing those out, I'll just continue and give you a little overview of tonight's application, which I would submit to this board is quite simple. The applicant is proposing the construction of a 4,900 square foot addition to this existing building and some other minor site improvements, and the purpose of this is to create better operating conditions for their existing facility. And that's important because the applicant has been there for quite some time. The applicant, as you'll hear, is very happy being there, wants to continue being there, but needs to just make some additional area to better continue their existing operations. Possibly, there may be one additional staff member on the property, but there is no expansion of any sort of work being done there, no difference in operations, no difference in deliveries. Really, you would not even know that there's any change in operations at all, just basically just looking for a little bit more square footage so they don't have to double up on certain uses of portions of the property. And again, you'll, you'll hear that from the applicant. In connection with this application tonight, we require minor site plan approval as well as a variance from the minimum front yard setback requirements where 50 feet is required by your ordinance and less than the 50 feet is proposed. We also require the approval of a waiver from the minimal light spillage onto the adjacent property, and I have noticed for the variances and waivers for all of the pre-existing non-conforming conditions that I note will not be exacerbated by the proposed development. I did that because when we went ahead and pulled the resolutions that we were able to get from the township for the property, only that one variance that I noted in 2006 was granted. So while they all are currently existing, they're all not being exacerbated again by what we're here for tonight. In the event that the board would just like to memorialize each one of those existing conditions, I wanted to give you the opportunity and the ability to do that. So I have two witnesses here tonight. I have Mr. Kaufman, who's sitting to my right. He is the owner of the property and he is the sole owner of the applicant corporation. And I have Mr. Samay Wali, and he is the applicant's engineer from Dynamic Engineering. I do also have this evening, Ms. Allison Murray. She is the applicant's architect. She's from Simmerera Architects. She, this would be her first time testifying, and she's very eager to be able to do that. So in the event that the board would like to hear some architectural testimony, we'd be happy to have her provide that to you, and they prepared these beautiful drawings that are up in front of the board tonight. So unless the board has any questions, I would like to have Mr. Kaufman begin his testimony.
I'm going to swear I'm in.
Yes. Do you swear any testimony? You can raise your right hand.
I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand.
I need to swear you in, okay?
Raise your hand.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And could you state, spell your name just right into the mic, please?
Okay. My name is Richard Kaufman, and, did you say spell it? Did, okay, and that's, okay, first name, Richard, R.I.C.H.A.R.D., and last name Kaufman, K.A.U.F.M.A.N.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. So you are the owner of the property, is that correct?
Correct.
And you are the, also the sole owner of Specialty Assays, correct?
That's also correct.
Could you just give the board a little bit of information about yourself and your company?
Okay, well, okay, in terms of my background, I have a lot, quite a bit of experience in chemistry, and I also have a PhD in biochemistry. And the applicant, which is the company, it's an international biotechnology research company, and I started the company by myself in 1996.
And you purchased the property where you're currently located, where your company is currently located, correct?
Yes, and that was in 2005.
And you've been consistently operating out of that property since 2005?
That's correct.
Okay, was the building there when you purchased it?
It was.
And do you recall how it was used prior to purchasing it?
The property was utilized as a printing company.
Okay, and you purchased it specifically to use for Specialty Assays?
Yes.
What are you now looking to do this evening by way of this application?
Okay, well, what we'd like to do would be to construct about a 4,900 square foot addition onto the existing building and also some other site improvements.
And you heard my opening, and I just want the board to hear a little bit from your perspective. What is the reason for this 4,900 square foot addition?
Okay, well, in terms of utilizing the space we have now, we actually have to utilize some spaces for dual purposes. For example, we have to, okay, just, just to have conferences or a conference room, we have to, we have to go into the office space area. And then if people just simply want to take a lunch break or a work break, okay, they also have to go into the office space area. So we just, we just, you know, we're just kind of lacking on sufficient space to, to do everything that we need to do there.
It's not very convenient.
Not, not convenient.
Okay, so you, do you anticipate changing the way that you operate in that facility in any way? Any changes in what you're doing there?
No, it'll, the main thing is we'll just have more room to operate.
Okay, how about, how many employees do you have there now?
We have 13, and we may hire one more with the, with the expansion.
Okay, just something to take care of all that additional space you're going to have, maybe, or something along those lines. Okay, so let's just, more about the operations, just so the board knows. You've been there for a while, but how many, how often do you have deliveries to the property?
Not very often. We have at most maybe one a week.
Okay, and what kind of a truck does that deliver?
It just, usually it's just your typical UPS, FedEx, and once in a while, post office will drop off a delivery, but, but nothing, nothing major.
And again, nothing will change. You don't anticipate any change in that aspect as a result of the addition?
No.
You're not going to be getting old product and storing things or anything like that? Just everything will continue as it currently is?
As it currently is now.
Except people have a nice little kitchen area to be able to go.
That would be nice.
You look like you're excited about that. Okay, so we have some testimony. We're going to hear from your engineer and possibly your architect tonight. Are you willing to abide by any representations that your experts make before the board tonight?
Sure, sure.
And if the board has any reasonable requests to impose conditions on your application, are you willing to consider those as well?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. I always turn over the professionals first? Nah, he shook his hand.
Mr. Chairman, our, our office has no questions for this witness.
Okay.
Same, same for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Sure thing. Board members?
I do have a couple, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kaufman, the resolution that's been introduced is A2, which is the 2006 resolution, grants the application to Moleku-Wire Corp. Who are they and what is their relation to the current applicant?
I'm sorry, did you say what's their relation to us?
What is their relation to the applicant and to the building itself?
Okay, yeah, they, they actually moved out, oh golly. Well, I'll tell you, well, we just, we told them they had to move out because we needed more space. But, but as far as us having any relationship with them, there really is no relationship.
So the building is currently fully occupied by your company?
That's correct.
So what's the status of the firewall that the board approved in 2006 to separate the two uses?
So there was a, this resolution, when there were two users of the property, there was a firewall that was approved in connection with that. Do you recall that back in 2006?
Yeah, the firewall is still there. Yeah, it actually kind of divides the building in half.
And how does one gain access from one side of the building to the other now that you're the only occupant? And what impact is your proposal going to have on all of that?
Maybe I didn't.
So Will, do you know, and this may be something for our engineer to testify to, but do you know what will happen, if anything, to that firewall with the new construction?
I would assume nothing would happen to it, yeah. What it actually does, it really kind of divides the building in half, but, but that for us, that really, that really doesn't hinder us or anything. Yeah, so I would assume, you know, that it'll just stay there.
Do, let me ask you this. Do you see any need to remove that firewall in order to properly use the building?
It doesn't have to be removed.
You would be fine if that stayed exactly the way it was?
Well, as a matter of fact, the way it is now, we, we kind of, it serves as sort of a division. We have, we have some offices on the, well, small crammed offices on one side of it, and then the other side we just use for.
Rest of your operations.
Yeah, for the operation.
So we could have our engineer go through exactly what will happen to that, again, if anything?
Mr. Kaufman, are you willing, as a condition of approval, to require that any future user of either side of the building where the wall exists has to come back to this board for approval?
So what, what he's saying is if you were to have a tenant in one side or both sides, would you be willing to put a condition on any approval that that tenant would have to come back to the board?
Yeah, sure.
For approval?
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, no, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Can I just give a point of information to the board just to consider, especially with that answer that was given? So in terms of when that prior company had come to the board, that was in a time period when there wasn't a provision in the zoning ordinance that had recognized and allowed other uses to go into an existing building. So the Township Committee had acted and actually changed the ordinance shortly after this approval had happened to actually make it easier for these types of buildings, non-residential, to have additional tenants put in. Specifically, one of the requirements, in order to do so, you have to meet the parking requirements. And then that was one of the efforts that the township had done in that era to try to make things a lot more business friendly instead of requiring everyone to have to go to the board. So just wanted to put that out there, that it's currently a provision in the ordinance that, that does allow, basically, just a point of information for the board.
Thanks for the reminder. I was part of that era.
I wasn't going to say it.
I make it sound old, man.
Anytime you use the word era, that just has a connotation to it.
Along with the smile of the man who wasn't here at the time of the era.
Mr. Kaufman, do you produce a, anything out of this building or is this strictly your research business? What is it that you actually do?
Well, it's, well, it's actually a combination of both. I mean, in terms of our salaries, the, most of the salaries are for research people, but we do produce some products as well.
And those products, you, you just ship out like small packages, UPS, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, they are, yeah, they, they go by, yeah, UPS, FedEx, yeah, they're not, they're nothing major.
And they're research-related projects, correct? They're not retail sale to customers or, or anything along those lines?
Well, there's, well, okay, we, we sell most of our products to diagnostic companies.
Okay. Business to business, as opposed to retail?
Correct, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Open to public? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
Aye. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to question this witness on his testimony, please come to the mic. Okay, there is a taker. Okay, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Green Colmer 144 Taylor. I'm just looking at the, the site. Currently, it's, it's 5,400. That's the building, that's what I see on the plans, and you're looking to expand almost double the size.
Correct.
For kitchen and offices.
And conference rooms.
And conference rooms.
And also, we'd like to expand the research area.
Let's speak into your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's awkward.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to put a conference room in. We need more office, office space. And we'd like to put a kitchenette in for people to eat somewhere. And then we'd also like to expand the research area a little bit.
No storage, I heard.
And there's some storage in, yeah, we, we store some equipment in there.
Do you know, and this could be a question for the engineer, is there a loading bay or dock that's proposed?
We could have our engineer testify.
I'll ask it then. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Next witness.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kaufman, I'm going to have Samay Wali and goes back and see the next Allison. I have the next witness come up. You're free.
Okay, thanks.
Run away.
No, don't run away.
Not too far.
Might need him later. I'd like to call our engineer, Mr. Samay Wali.
Okay.
You swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Spell your name.
First name, S.A.M.E.H., last name, W.A.L.I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wali. Could you give the board the benefit of your education and experience, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I am a graduate of NJIT with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I work as a project manager at Dynamic Engineering at the Chester office. I've worked on numerous industrial, commercial, residential projects throughout the state of New Jersey, and I've been accepted as a professional and testified before various boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Okay, and you were accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to present him to the board as an expert.
Hearing any objections? Hearing none, we accept. Please continue.
Okay, so we're going to put up the engineering drawings, and we will make sure, I'll make a note about the loading dock and the firewall. So we'll make sure we hit those.
Counsel, counsel for purposes of the record, what the board normally does is even though this has been provided as part of the application, we tend to, we normally mark the exhibits that the witnesses testified to individually and have them describe what the exhibit is, who the author is, and the date. So for example, this would be A3.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Wali, why don't you go ahead and do exactly that the council recommended? What are we looking at? We'll mark that as A3, and the date, who prepared it, and then we can just go through, and you can start your testimony.
Absolutely. So this is the aerial map exhibit. It is dated March 14th, 2024. Uses a scale of 1 inch equals 150 feet, with north pointing to the right-hand side of the sheet. Essentially, it is...
And this was prepared by your office?
This was prepared by our office, yes. And essentially, just an aerial image outlining the site alongside the adjacent uses, as well as the zones that are surrounding the property.
Okay, and the site, could you just, so the record is clear, the site is what is outlined in yellow?
That is correct, yes.
And the yellow dotted line around that is the 200-foot?
That is correct, yes.
So can you just describe the condition of the property? And I don't know if you want to use this, or, so are we marking, I'm sorry, Mr. Bernstein, are we marking each page, or just the overall site plans as...
Marking each page that he testifies to. Okay. Can you wait one moment, Counselor?
Sure.
I'm making poor Mr. Coys get up because one of the...
He looks very happy about that.
That's why I said, that's why he's not, I'm making.
While he's doing that, what date was it due on that?
This is dated in March 14th, 2024.
Do it the old-fashioned way, hit the button.
There were revised plans that were submitted.
And I'm looking at the ones that were submitted February 6th, 24, and... May 24, 24.
Thank you, David.
And it looks like it was submitted July 8, 23.
Yeah, so this was actually prepared as a separate exhibit, that just colorized these old lines. But it is essentially the same aerial that was submitted to the town.
Okay, so we should mark this as an exhibit as opposed to a document that was previously submitted in connection with the application?
We normally would mark it as an exhibit even if having previously submitted, only to those that a witness testifies to. Thank you, Mr. Coys.
You're welcome.
Okay, so if you could just describe the property itself, and then move on to the surrounding properties?
Yeah, absolutely. So the site is located at 56 Old Camplain Road in the township of Hillsborough. It's identified as Block 67, Lot 16 on the Township Tax Maps. Has a lot area of approximately 1.72 acres. The site is split zones with all existing and proposed improvements within the light industrial district or the I-1 zone. I did want to note as well that the southern portion of the property is within the residential agricultural district, which is the RA zone. As mentioned previously, this is an existing research facility that's just going to be expanded for the operations. And that's essentially the gist of the overall development in terms of where it's located, the zoning, and getting into the adjacent uses next. To the north, we have Old Camplain Road and commercial and industrial developments, including Certified Labeling Solutions Incorporated, United Granite Railroad Tracks, and Route 206 beyond. To the east, we have Conca's Corporation and M&amp;A Recycling Center with commercial and industrial uses beyond. To the south is wooded areas with residential and commercial uses beyond alongside Camplain Road. To the west is Levco Pools with other commercial uses beyond. And getting into the existing...
Did you want to put another exhibit up, or is this one...
Yeah, we could just bring up the survey at that point.
Okay, so we'll mark this as A4, this is a survey?
Yes, and the survey was submitted before the town.
Okay, and this was prepared by your office?
This was prepared by Dynamic Survey LLC.
Okay, and the date on that one?
The date on the survey is, one second. It's March 16th, 2023. Uses a scale of 1 inch equals 20 feet, with north pointing to the right of the sheet.
And the condition of the property has not changed since that date?
That is correct.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just wanted to make sure we get all of these entered into evidence.
No problem. So existing site access is along Old Camplain Road, which is a municipal road. It is a full movement driveway to access the site along Old Camplain Road. Just wanted to note that a 30-foot wide driveway is required, whereas a 21.6-foot driveway is existing and proposed to remain. As for the existing building, it's approximately 5,422 square feet with a one-story research facility, which is a permitted use within the zone. There are currently nine parking spaces located to the southeast of the building. The site is also occupied by wooded and wetland areas within the southern portion of the site. I did want to note as well that the wetlands are ordinary with a zero-foot buffer. And there are actually additional wetlands at the very south corner as well, which will also remain undisturbed, similar to the ordinary buffers within, closer to the central of the site. And I did want to note that we, our office did receive an LOI verification approval from NJDEP on May 6th, 2024.
And that was submitted to the board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to put up the other drawings the board can see?
Sure.
A little bit closer about what we're proposing. We saw the nice, pretty picture of it, but... Now, let's see what it's gonna look like from an engineering perspective.
A5.
Yes, thank you. What's the title of this one?
This exhibit is titled Site Plan Rendering.
Again, prepared by your office?
Prepared by our office, dated June 6th, 2024. With a scale of 1 inch equals 20 feet, and north pointing to the right of the sheet. This exhibit is simply the submitted site plan to the board with the existing and proposed landscaping superimposed.
Okay, so let's just take a look at what's there. Can you just explain which portion of the, which color shows the existing building and which color shows the expansion?
Absolutely. So the existing building is shown in that beige tanish color, whereas the proposed expansion is shown in orange. And getting into a little bit more detail, the proposed expansion will maintain the same building height at 17.3 as the existing structure. The expansion will be approximately 4,869 square feet. The, as mentioned previously, the existing site access via Old Camplain Road will remain the same under proposed conditions. And the requirement, as again, as noted previously, was noted in the Township Ordinance as 30 feet, whereas only 21.6 feet is existing and proposed to remain. As for loading, I noticed a question on it earlier. There is a loading space that is being proposed along the eastern face of the building addition. The proposed loading area can accommodate a refuse truck, an SU40 box truck, as well as circulation for a fire truck in case of emergencies. And in addition to that, there's also a proposed 10-by-20 trash enclosure along the eastern portion of the site, to remain hidden from Old Camplain Road. As for parking...
Let's just stay on that loading area for a second. Did you hear the testimony of Mr. Kaufman previously with regard to the operations of the facility?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that the loading would just be utilized as for refuse and for the box truck deliveries that he testified to previously?
Yes, that's correct. I believe the largest truck that was anticipated on-site was an SU40, which was run in a truck circulation and confirmed no conflicts.
And it wouldn't even be possible, really, to navigate a truck larger than that on that property?
It would be very challenging.
Especially with the parking spaces directly below. With regard to the location, you indicated it was to the rear of the existing building?
The exist, yeah, the current loading space is to the rear of the existing building.
And the proposed addition is also to the rear of the existing building?
That is correct, yes.
Is it, could it be, or will it be visible in any significance from Old Camplain Road?
No.
All right, I'm sorry, keep going.
Sure. So moving forward onto the parking for the site. The Township does require a minimum parking space size of 10 feet by 20 feet, whereas 9 feet by 18 feet is currently on-site existing and also proposed as part of this development. The Township Ordinance would require 11 parking spaces for the entirety of the site, whereas 12 spaces is proposed, which does comply with the Township Code. Touching back on the loading, 10-by-60-foot loading space is proposed, which again, does comply with the minimum township requirements. And a single loading space is proposed, which again, does comply with the minimum space requirements for the facility. Additional improvements would include two new parallel parking spaces proposed along the northeastern property line adjacent to the site, with one additional parking space after the existing pavement has been restriped. Also want to note that the ADA space has been regraded and brought into compliance, as right now it's currently not ADA compliant. The sidewalk and ramp have also been designed for ADA compliance as well. That would be providing access to the facility. And just wanted to note that generally, the redevelopment is within the limits of the previously disturbed areas. So we're not really branching out to disturb any additional wooded areas or anything to the wetlands, anything of that sort. Additional stormwater improvements, which I'll touch on a little bit more detail later, include a small-scale bioretention basin, a detention pipe basin, and a water quality unit to handle the stormwater management. As for signage, we are also proposing a proposed freestanding sign along Old Camplain Road, which is also in compliance with the Township Code. Wanted to touch on one of the waivers as well that we would be requesting, which again, is an existing nonconformity, but we did want to bring it to the board's attention. And that would be in regards to concrete curbing being required around the perimeter of parking and loading areas. There's currently only a small section of curbing that's currently on-site existing along the eastern property line where the parking is currently, present day. That curbing will be replaced in kind, and that is the extent and limit of the proposed curbing, just to limit the disturbance to the site. In addition, as for buffers, the loading areas and parking lots with 10 spaces or more are required to have a 30-foot buffer from adjoining streets and property lines. However, there's currently, under present-day conditions, only 3.2 feet to the eastern property line, and that will also remain under proposed conditions. And to the site grading, the site was designed to maintain the existing topography to the greatest extent possible and to preserve the topography along the perimeter of the site while providing positive drainage. The grading was also designed to maintain existing drainage patterns, and...
A drainage report was submitted to the board indicating that the maintenance of those conditions, correct?
That is correct, yes. And lastly, as in terms of grading, the site was also updated for grading to bring the site into ADA compliance as well. Touching a little bit more into stormwater, the northwestern half of the site drains towards Old Camplain right-of-way. The southeastern half of the site drains towards the wetlands and the wooded area. This project was designed to meet the New Jersey Sediment and Erosion Control Standards, the Township of Hillsborough standards, as well as NJAC 7:8. I wanted to note that the site isn't classified as a minor development for NJAC 7:8, in addition to the Township of Hillsborough as well. The project will not disturb more than an acre of land, nor will increase by more than 1/4 acre of motor vehicle rated surfaces when compared to the existing condition. As noted previously, the existing drainage patterns will be maintained to the greatest extent possible under proposed conditions. The project is not subject to the quantity, quality, or groundwater recharge requirements per NJAC 7:8. However, the subject site is, we are required to provide quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge standards per the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission regulations, which the project does comply with, through the use of a pipe detention basin for quantity reductions, a small-scale bioretention basin for quality, quantity, as well as groundwater recharge for the increase in motor vehicle services, and an ADS Barracuda Water Quality Unit for 50% TSS removal, as requested by the board engineer. And overall, I just wanted to note that this project does comply with all applicable stormwater management code requirements. And we actually had a chance to touch base and speak to the board engineer this afternoon as well, just to discuss some minor questions he had that we can certainly comply with and make sure that everything is handled from his review letter as well.
Okay, so there was a review letter, a couple of review letters, actually, that were issued. One by the board engineer dated March 11th. Are those typically marked, Mr. Bernstein, into evidence as well? One by the board's planner dated March 5th, and one from the Township Fire Marshal dated March 13th. Your office responded to the board engineer's letter on May 23rd, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And between that and your conversation with the board engineer today, have, has the applicant agreed to address all of the board engineer's issues?
Yes.
And with regard to additional approvals that are required, do we have approvals from the county planning board, as well as the Soil Conservation District?
Yes, we do.
And you indicated in your testimony previously that we do have the LOI line verification that was submitted to the board?
Yes.
Okay, you had some testimony with regard to the DNR Canal Commission. An application has been submitted to them, correct?
Yes.
We don't yet have an approval?
We have an informal approval via email. They were on-board with our design. However, we did not formally resubmit, just because we're waiting to get the local approval from the Township before we send back, send back final plans to the DRCC. But they did agree with our design, and we would just essentially provide plans for the records, just to issue that final approval.
Okay, so essentially, if you were to resubmit prior to getting board approval, and then there was a change in tonight's application that was approved, you'd have to resubmit a third time to the DNR?
Yes, and that's essentially why we're just holding off until we have final township approval.
Okay. And with regard to the board planner's letter, there was a determination that there was no further roadway dedication required. There was a question about that, and then some variances that might be required. Are you in agreement that there is no further roadway dedication necessary in this matter?
Yes, I believe that's where we left off with the planner.
And then there was also a question regarding an EV charging space. Can you just give some testimony to the board as to why one was not provided in this matter?
Yes, so a EV charging station was not provided, specifically just because, based off of the state requirement for the EV charging stations, that notes specifically only developments with multi-unit dwellings of five units or more, or commercial developments with 25 parking spaces or more are required to have an EV charging station. In this case, we are only proposing 12 spaces, therefore, that EV charging requirement is not applicable to the site.
And has the applicant indicated that there would really even be a need for an electric charging station at the site?
Based off our discussions with the applicant, he would not need any EV charging for his employees.
You did outline the variances and the waivers that are required. The majority of those are pre-existing nonconforming conditions, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And they will not be exacerbated by the proposed development?
Yes, that's correct.
And I do understand you're not a planner, but we do have some very minor, minor variance along with the pre-existing conditions, as well as the minor waiver. So I just have a couple of questions, if you could just answer in your best engineering opinion. The nonconforming lot with is existing, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the applicant is unable to acquire, to the best of your understanding, any additional property in order to make that lot with conforming?
That's correct.
You testified that the existing and proposed use is permitted in the township's IL light industrial zone?
Yes.
So because of that, would you say that continuing that use would continue an appropriate use of the property as determined by the township's code ordinance and permitted uses?
Yes.
From an engineering perspective, do you feel that there's sufficient space on the property for the proposed addition?
Yes, there is. It looks like the maximum previous coverage permitted for the site is about 60%, whereas we're proposing less than half of that at 28%, with the, which includes the expansion in that 28%.
And again, in your engineering opinion, is this location appropriate for the continuation of this use in light of what you've testified to?
Yes, the expansion is gonna be behind the existing building. So as mentioned previously, most people driving past Old Camplain Road would never even know if there's expansion there to begin with.
As you were designing this development and this proposed addition, were you considering any potential impact on the roadway, on adjacent passersby, on adjacent properties?
We're not anticipating any impact to them, no.
And that design was taken into account in order to ensure that that did not happen?
Yes.
And I think the last thing was, was there anything in the fire marshal's review letter that we could not comply with?
No, we should be able to comply with everything.
Anything else you have for the board?
I believe that covers my testimony, in case there's any other questions by the board.
And did we put all of your plans up on the screen? Did we enter them all in? Make sure we do that.
He only has to put in what he testified to. The application is part of the record.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, may you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm referring to our office review letter dated March 11th, 2024. I believe the applicant's engineer has mentioned that review letter. And as Mr. Wally has testified, subsequent to our initial review letter, there was a subsequent submittal to the township on May 24th. Our office did not prepare a second review letter, but we have taken a look at the plans. And as Mr. Wally mentioned, we have been in conversation with his office. We're confident that the issues addressed in our original review letter can be addressed. Many of them have been with the second submittal. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention and get Mr. Wally's agreement on record on the issues that we discussed this afternoon, if that's okay. The first item was, in order to promote as much potential stormwater infiltration as possible, we had discussed with his office capping the proposed retention bio retention basin under drain. I just want to confirm that.
Yes, that's something we can comply with.
Second item was, we discussed removing the impermeable liner from the bottom of the proposed underground detention basin, and that's a...
Yes, that can also be complied with.
Okay. I don't know if we mentioned this specifically this afternoon, but I want to make sure you would agree to, prior to construction, make sure you extend your soil log under the proposed underground detention basin to at least 12 inches below the proposed basin.
Yeah, we can comply with that, no problem.
Next, and I'm not sure we touched on this one, but I want to make sure that there's details provided for the wear and orifice for outlet control structure 100.
Yes, that can be provided if it wasn't already.
We did discuss you would agree to remove, there's a proposal to abandon an existing stormpipe that connects to a township inlet on Old Camplain Road. And my understanding is your office will agree to have that pipe removed?
Yes, that's correct.
It appears on your detail that you're proposing concrete aprons as you, for the headwall for outlet control structure 201, that would kind of inhibit infiltration. Would your office agree to remove those concrete aprons from the detail?
Yes, we could agree.
And lastly, could you clarify the TSS removal rate for the Barracuda water quality MTD?
Yes, so we are providing a Barracuda ADS water quality unit that has 50% TSS removal. TSS stands for total suspended solids.
As I understand, the DEP looks for 80% TSS. Is there any reason we can't find a device that will meet the DEP 80%?
Yeah, so reason for that 50% was the Barracuda water quality unit was actually not required for NJDEP standards. So we wanted to, you know, meet the town halfway and essentially just provide something, that being a 50% TSS removal.
Well, I would ask consideration, since that stormwater is coming from the loading dock area and it's going to an underground detention basin, our office would like to see that raised to the 80% DEP number. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think we can comply with that, no problem.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that addresses all of our office's issues, and with that testament, we would have no concerns with the board if they wanted to have a conditional approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Riley.
Good evening.
Could you cite this section? Could you just help me understand, because I believe we may be at disagreement, be at a disagreement involving the make-ready spaces, but just to kind of work that out?
Sure.
Can you help me understand, which section are you referring to in terms of the exemption?
Yeah, sure.
It's in the mild state right ordinance.
And just to help you while you're looking, so I'm looking at section D. Sorry for the feedback. I'm looking at section D.
You're looking at the model ordinance?
At the model ordinance. Not yet. The township adopted one that actually has the numbers, that it'll be in the code.
Exactly.
Check back with us in a couple of weeks. But I'm looking at D2 in the model ordinance, where it says, as a conditional of preliminary site plan approval, each application involving a parking lot or garage not covered in one above Shaw, and then it gives, it says in A, install at least one make-ready parking space if there will be 50 or fewer. And then I do see at the bottom of two H that says, notwithstanding the provisions of the section, a retailer that provides 25 or fewer off-street parking spaces, or the developer, owner, and so on and so forth, you know, doesn't have to require it. So just help me, I just want to make sure for the board that we're getting this right. Is there another section I should be looking at?
No, so that was actually the section we were referring back to. We were looking back at that section that specifically said retailer, just because this is a commercial development. I know a lot of the other code sections in this statute are specifically geared towards residential, so we were kind of gearing this more towards that retail commercial aspect.
So just my suggestion to the board, regardless of Mr. Riley and I, whether we agree or not, ultimately, the state has jurisdiction over this. The DCA, they've put out a lot of information. They've been very good at responding to these types of disagreements. And so I would recommend to the board that ultimately the DCA can make a decision on this, if it was a condition.
And I would have no problem with that. I'm actually looking at the DCA January 2024 FAQ memo, whatever. Doesn't have a number or anything like that, but it does say, one of the questions, the applicant is coming in for site plan approval, but no new parking spaces are being added. Do they need to comply? The answer is, the requirements are based off of the number of off-street parking spaces associated with the new construction. Therefore, if there are no off-street parking spaces being constructed as part of the new construction, there is no requirement. In a case of an expansion to existing development or an existing parking lot, the requirement is based upon the number of new off-street parking spaces. So I think probably based on that, that would support it, but we wouldn't have any problem doing that.
We've had this before, where we just shoot them an email, or however you would want to go about it.
If you have a person specific, wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have no issues with that being a condition of approval, just, I guess, go with whatever the DCA filed answer is on that.
And it's just clarification to the board, it's make-ready, it's not an actual charging station.
Anything else, Ms. Coys?
Oh, thank you. No, that's, thank you, you addressed the right of way. That's something that we took a look at, and we didn't find it was necessary. And if the board engineer is in agreement with us, then, you know, we're advising the board that there shouldn't be any additional right of way. Other than that, to the board, I have nothing else to offer at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members.
I just have two minor questions, and it deals with landscaping plans, because we didn't really discuss that much. As far as any tree waivers or anything, as far as for anything being proposed is needed? And also, as far as buffering to the side where the parking is being built, is there anything on that side that the lights would affect if people are driving in that we might want to consider planting or buffering so we don't have lights shining into people's property?
Yeah, sure. So to answer your first question, there are 27 total trees proposed, which does comply with the township's tree replacement ordinance. And, I'm sorry, could you just repeat your question?
Where the proposed parking lot is being built, and the cars would drive head in, that's right up against the property line, there's no real buffer between the parking and the neighbor to, I guess, is that the south or east? I can't tell from the...
This would be the east.
The east?
Yes.
Is there a building there or a structure that the lights would be obtrusive if they were to be coming in at night that we might consider buffering?
It's a commercial development, and the parking spaces are currently there present day. It is very close to the property line. We would be susceptible to providing some additional shrubs if the board is leaning towards that. But we did want to note as well that we did revise the lighting analysis to provide shielded fixtures to eliminate any light spill as well.
I think he's concerned about the lights, the headlights of the car.
The headlights, yeah.
But that's good too, that we're doing that.
Yes.
That's that part.
Yeah, we would be open to providing some additional landscaping and shrubs along that row of parking, just to...
What do you got, about three feet?
About three feet.
In between there, so some upright skinny trees of some sort to flock the lights?
Yeah, possibly some hangerings or something.
The trash enclosure, is that sealed with a gate? Or is it just a dumpster sitting where?
No, it's enclosed.
Enclosed.
I believe it was with chain link.
Okay.
Yes, chain link.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
A related question about parking spots, right? Going to the papers that I have here, did I get this number correct? There are seven existing regular parking spots, one handicapped, right? What is the incremental number of parking spots we're looking to add?
To add the next accessible space?
Right, basically, there has been a variance requested, right, for the parking spaces, right?
For the size, there was a...
For the size.
Yeah, there was a waiver, yeah, correct.
So I'm assuming we are adding some more parking spaces, are we?
We were, yes, so I can go back to the survey, it might be a little bit more clear on this. There was an additional space at the far, if you're looking at the plan sheet, the far left-hand side, with a very large parking space that hasn't been striped. So we essentially just went in and restriped the existing pavement, and we were able to get one more parking space out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. On that same drawing, can you just clarify the existing loading dock? I don't think it was clear on the drawings that we saw until you brought this up. Right, so there's an existing dock there, right? Or at garage door?
Yes, so this existing dock would be located at the, I think this is the western side of the building, and it's tucked away behind the building. It is a little bit more challenging under existing conditions to circulate back there, which is going to be improved with the new loading dock location under proposed conditions.
Yeah, all right, thanks. I just want to clarify that it wasn't, when we saw in the initial rendering, we saw the door there, but it's just moved from one location to the next.
Yeah, correct.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I got one more. With the new building, is there any additional heat ventilation or existing units being put in to cover the existing building? And are they putting on the roof or inside, or?
Yes, there's going to be additional HVAC systems, I believe on the roof.
On the roof.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bernstein?
Nope.
Okay. Motion open to public.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone in the public that would like to ask the engineer. Any questions on his testimony? Feel free to come up. Okay. You're done, for now.
For now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have, as I indicated, our architect here. We put the renderings up in the beginning. If you'd like her to come and answer any questions, she can answer the question with regard to the firewall issue, which is basically, there's not going to be any change, but she's here if the board has any questions.
Yeah, come on up, we've got 15 minutes still.
You're up. She's so excited.
That's it.
Exactly.
Okay, we're going to first where you in?
Yep, it's Allison Murray, A-L-L-I-S-O-N, Murray, M-U-R-R-A-Y.
Okay, Allison, could you give the board the benefit of your education and experience?
Okay, yes. Just one second, let me pull this up.
Wait till you hear this. I mean, you can't believe she hasn't testified yet.
Okay, I am, sorry, I graduated with a bachelor in architecture in the year 2004 from Carnegie Mellon University, and I've been with Seminera Architect here for 20 years this July. I received my license in architecture in New Jersey in May of 2011.
Okay, and this, as you indicated, is your first time, before the board?
Yep, I've been to many presentations, I haven't gotten to present, so.
I would say, based on her education, her experience working with Seminera, and the fact that she has a current license in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
We'd like to submit her as an expert in the field of architecture.
Okay, dare anyone to object? No. We accept, please continue.
Thank you very much. So since you're here, let's, how much time do we have? I don't want to take up too much of Mr. O'Brady's time, because I know he could probably need every session.
We will be breaking at quarter of.
Okay.
So you have 15 minutes.
So why don't you, excuse me, give the board an explanation of what we're proposing, and let's discuss that firewall as well.
Okay.
And we're going to mark this...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, A6.
A6, I believe.
Yes, A6. And this is marked, this is labeled, what's the name of that?
Floor plan, prepared by our office, dated 23rd June 2023.
Perfect.
As previously stated, the applicant currently occupies a 5,000 square foot building, which is shown at the lower portion of the page here. A single-story, approximately 4,900 square foot addition has been proposed. This would expand the total building footprint to about 9,900 square feet. Note that due to the size and use of this building, no sprinkler system is required, none exists currently. The need for the addition is to expand the usable floor area to alleviate the current congestion that exists in the building and to get rid of the overlapping functions. The addition would provide for, as previously stated, conference room, break room space, two offices, some general office area, an ADA accessible toilet room, and additional storage space. This is all, again, to support the existing production and research that currently exist. Right now, the research area is also everyone's office area, their break room is the front entry hall, and conferences are held in, and office are back in the warehouse. So this will make their current R&amp;D operations more efficient, efficient and safer, permit a bit of growth where needed. And additionally, the addition relocated the loading dock door to make it a lot more efficient, work better on the site, brings it up closer. All right, I'm just going to switch to our rendering here to talk about the outside of the building. Okay, the existing building, you can see in this photo up at the top right now, it's a masonry building but covered in an EFS system with some metal panel accents. The proposed addition would be similar in terms of scale and colors and materials. It's all proposed to be insulated metal panels currently. Yeah, and as previously stated, we're only anticipating that there would be a small rooftop unit over the office area itself, the storage area in the back would only be heated. So that would be one small unit on the roof. That's all I have.
And just to reiterate, that addition would be behind the existing building and not visible from the street?
Correct.
And just to touch on that firewall, any change to the firewall in the existing building?
No, right now, there's no proposed changes to the existing building layout, just a connection to the addition.
I have no other questions.
And we're just going to mark this A7?
I think it was A, oh, yes, A7. Thank you. And the title of this is View Looking West?
View Looking West.
Right.
And there's a small date in the lower bright, 6th of June 2024.
And prepared by your office.
Yes, prepared by our office.
Okay. May you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I notice that there's a proposed restroom in the expansion?
Yes, that's correct.
Will the utilities be extended from the existing building?
Yes.
Or is there going to be any exterior utilities to service that?
Yes, that's correct. All utilities serviced staying where it is in the existing building and just being extended into the addition.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Coys.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Board members. Bernstein, nothing?
So the larger picture is the rendering of what the extension is going to be, look like?
Yes, you see... Yes, you see, this is where the existing building ends, right over here, so everything to the left over here is the new office area, and then you see the new loading dock behind, which is just relocated from the current location.
And if you could go back to the layout picture of the interior?
Yes.
Could you highlight in that picture where the existing firewall is, just reapplication of?
To be honest, it either must be, I would guess it's this one, though it also could be this wall, this one only has one opening in it, and it divides it approximately in half.
Is there an existing door now in that firewall? Are we having, so?
Yes.
Okay, just for people to understand where it is. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I was trying to see if that resolution indicated where it might be located, but there's a three and a half foot wide fire rated wall.
Mr. Chairman, I don't recall, maybe, I apologize, was there a description of the materials that would be used for the purposes of this expansion?
I think so, but if you could put that back on the record.
Yeah, and at least in terms of the exterior finish materials, it's going to be insulated metal panel, colors, scale, similar to the existing.
Thank you, sorry.
I have a question, I'm just curious, on the plans, it says that the existing HRC units are going to be relocated?
That's just like some condensers on the ground for the existing system.
I'm just curious, where are they going to be relocated to?
It's a good question, I'm honestly not sure right now, we'd have to find an appropriate location.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
You could certainly add a condition to work with your professionals to find an appropriate location.
Yeah, it'll obviously be submitted as part of building permit, should we get there.
Okay. Okay, motion open to public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if there's anyone in the public, and I see him going into the hall. As before, state your name and address for the record.
Grant Colmer, Taylor Avenue. Could you just estimate the, I see the word warehouse just proposed there, would that be classified as a warehouse, would you say?
Considering, I did check the heights before, this is matching the height of the existing building, at this low end, we're only about 12 foot high to the underside of deck, it's more of a storage area, it doesn't have the sort of height or scale you would associate with the word warehouse.
And then, so this is just storage, like, half of this time is just storage?
Yes.
Or production?
Storage, some allowance for expanding their production area, just giving themselves a little, a little more room.
Are there any walls proposed for that space?
No.
Just open space?
Yep, currently just open space.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none?
I have no further witnesses, Mr. Chair, and again, I thank you for your time. I would submit that this has been a property owner and a business in your town that's been here for quite some time, they could use some additional space, they'd like to stay in town, and that's really what this application is for. So we believe we've submitted the proper information for you to be able to grant the relief that we're asking for, and we ask that you look favorably on the application.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein?
Public comment on the overall application?
Yeah, we have still about eight minutes going to my clock here. So now we, do I need to do a motion? No, I can just, okay. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to provide comment on this application and its totality, this is your opportunity?
This is a great one to have. Appreciate it.
I see no take. I know, well, hopefully we'll get to the vote, we'll figure that out, too, so, all right, so there's no comments from the public, so Mr. Bernstein?
Motion to close.
Oh, I need to, motion to close, sorry.
Motion to close to public.
Mr. Scovos, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ma'am. Mr. Bernstein?
So motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve ordinance, pardon me, the application before you, which is Specialty Assets Inc., 23 PB-16 SPV, with all waivers and variances sought, as well as agreement of the various conditions of approval, the approval to meet all the requirements of the planners and the engineers' reports, as well as their comments on the record this evening.
Okay, including working with our professionals, for anyone?
Working with professionals to ensure compliance.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before a motion?
Aye.
Just clarification, because the first witness had agreed to a condition, and I, as a point of information, I just want to have it be clear, because it does present an administrative challenge to the zoning officer, to be aware of that condition that might conflict with the existing zoning ordinance, so we just want to know for sure if that's a condition that the planning board is going to require. And just a reminder what I'm talking about, I believe the condition that was agreed upon was that if there was any new tenant or additional tenant, that it would have to come back to the board, so, just so that we could be very clear, especially when we issue permits going forward, that we could be aware and do the right thing, do the right thing in terms of complying with the board's requirements. Thank you.
And if I could just understand, that new ordinance would require returning to the board in that instance if there was additional parking, if it didn't meet the parking requirements? Was that, that the change, did I hear that right?
Yes, so from that, from that era or time, yes. Not that long ago.
I would indicate, for those of us who were there, that the concern was, and the concern continues to be, that businesses are moving in and out, and the board and the township committee does want to be aware of changes in use and changes in facilities, such as, for example, this evening, since I'm unaware that the township is aware that the building was currently being occupied by one tenant, but that's the right, that is the suggestion here.
And we have no objection to complying with that condition, irrespective of what the ordinance is.
The planning department may, but they'll get over it.
It's nice to have friends.
Okay.
So since the applicant and the parties have agreed to that condition, that is a condition of approval.
Okay, I'll make that motion now, thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Vander Vliet?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Commitment in the body?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chigarelli?
Yes.
Chair Suraj?
Yes. Okay.
Before the board takes a break, I would ask for a reword on the approval on campus. Apologize to three members of the board, which is a quote on that, we should not four. So I do despair, we should Chigarelli, the body, himself.
Okay, but we don't have to re-motion it?
It's a re-motion, it's a re-motion.
Okay. Okay, you guys shoot it out.
I'll, I'll make the motion to the extension on campus, as per the conditions.
Second?
Okay, roll call, again.
Commitment in the body?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chigarelli?
Yes.
Chair Suraj?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with, thank you, I would indicate to the board that we, that I, on behalf of the chair, did indicate to Mr. O'Grady that we would start at nine o'clock, so I would ask the board to be back in position to do so, so that...
Yeah, so start wandering back about five of us, we'll be sharp, so.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and congratulations, you did well.
Thank you.
So we'll be back in session at nine o'clock. Okay, we've reconvened, and just for the record, Mr. Deb?
Mr. Deb has excused himself, Mr. Vitale and Mr. Vander Vliet are sitting up here, but I do not believe they qualify to vote on this matter or participate, but they are here, and I believe they may or may not be reviewing the various videos, we'll deal with it occasionally. Also, Mr. Chairman, for purpose of the record, before we start this application, let me indicate that I have a certification of absent board member examination of record eligibility to vote, from Mr. Wagner, indicating he viewed the recording, video recording of April the 4th, 2024, and I also have the same certification of absent board member examination of record slash eligibility to vote, viewed the video recording also of April 4th, 2024, from Mr. Radowitz, which makes them both eligible to participate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So up next is Western Road LLC, file number 22-PB-03-MSPV, time of decision, June 30th of this year, block 185, lot 1, Weston Road, and the application's being continued from the April 4th, 2024 meeting without further notice.
Mr. Chairman, I would indicate that objectors are currently in the middle of their presentation, so it is up to them to start.
Good evening, Michael Sinkovich, on behalf of Hearthstone at Hillsborough Community, and we last had Paul Gleitz, our professional planner, and he is done with direct examination, done with cross-examination, I believe the board and the board professionals had also asked questions, and I think he's subject to public questioning.
Okay, Mr. Oh, yeah, Mr. O'Grady, sorry.
Mike O'Grady, on behalf of Western Road LLC.
Okay, so I know Mr. Mayhew had requested, had a couple of additional questions, so before we go to public?
Each one of your testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
If the record can be stated, spell your name.
Paul Gleitz, G-L-E-I-T-Z.
You guys only have one?
Hmm?
They have two mics over there. Mike likes hot, he has one of the working mics.
Sure. One, two, three, better?
Nope, he just disconnected it.
You're fine.
You're good?
No? You sure? Okay. Mr. Mayhew, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Gleitz? I wanted to make sure that we touched upon, you may have, you may have discussed this in your report, in your opinion, are there different types of warehouses?
Yes, the State Planning Commission report discusses different types of warehouses, I think, as you travel around the state, there's different types of warehouses, there's, so yes, there are many different types of warehouses.
In your opinion, have the types of warehouses and their intensity evolved since the Hillsborough ordinance addressing warehouses was originally written?
In 1984, 1986, that, that, between then and now?
Correct.
Yes, that was part of my direct testimony.
Are you aware of any state requirement that a township must zone for and provide areas for every type of warehouse?
No.
In your review of the ordinances, have you noticed that the Hillsborough ordinance establishes different parking and loading criteria for different uses?
Yes.
And would you say the amount of parking and the amount of loading for a use is an indication of the intensity planned for that use?
Yes, we discussed the concept of intensity last time, and I believe I previously testified that you can, there's many factors that go into intensity, one of them can be parking, loading, onsite circulation, other types of things, so yes, I think you can look at the amount of parking and the amount of loading areas as another, one of many ways of describing the intensity of a use.
Can, can you recall for the board, what is the amount of required parking for this proposed warehouse?
Let me check my notes here. I know I've reviewed that, just give me a second here to... Okay. I believe my analysis was that 20 loading spaces are being provided and five are required, which is roughly four times the requirement, and that 99 passenger vehicle spaces are being provided, where 43 are required, representing 2.3 times the required parking spaces for the Land and Mellon ordinance.
And how many trailer parking, storage spots are provided, and is, does the ordinance require any?
I don't believe the ordinance requires any trailer storage, from my recollection, it does not, and there are, let's see here, 28, I believe, was the number of trailer parking spaces.
And can, can I, can you reiterate, is your understanding of the ordinance, does that require any outdoor trailer storage spaces? Is that correct?
I don't recall that being one of the requirements.
So in your opinion, would you say the proposed use is significantly more intensive than what the ordinance anticipated? I think I've already provided testimony to the board that I believe this is more intense than the zone anticipated, from a number of standpoints, from the purposes of zoning, from the site plan itself, from the provision of additional parking, loading, and loading spaces and, and storage areas on, on the property, that all of it combines to be something that was more intense than was anticipated by the zoning.
Kind of objected to the form of the question as cumulative or repetitious.
I would indicate to the board, I would concur with that objection.
Okay.
Mr. Gleitz, in your opinion, would the proposed use, based on the number of parking spaces, the traffic, the loading spaces, the trailer storage spaces, would that be a use that was not anticipated when the ordinance was written?
I've testified to that, yes.
And no my objection, speculation?
Mr. Chairman, that's the questions I have at this time. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Okay. Board members, before we open to public? Okay? Yep.
I have a motion open to public.
So moved.
Second.
Give it to Mr. Scovos. He reached the mic.
You reach your quota.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, if there's anyone from the public that's not represented by the, the objectors, the attorneys, please come forward, state your name and record for the, state your name and address for the record, man, I'm getting tired.
And, and indicate they're not represented.
Right, and indicate you're not being represented, if that is the fact.
Good evening, Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Dane, not, not part of Hearthstone. So just a couple of questions, last time you were talking about, you were asked by Mr. O'Grady, is this really just a warehouse application? And you said it was. My question is, is it possible that it's a warehouse and a truck terminal? Is it, is it possible if both of those uses, is it possible to have a facility that would have both of those uses at the same time?
Yes, and when I reviewed the definition of truck terminal in the land use ordinance, it specifically states that, again, the existence or proposed location of storage or warehousing of items transported by trucks should not be deemed... transported by trucks should not be deemed to, to change the character of the use, which means the foregoing definition of truck terminal. So I think the, the local definition and allows for that combination of, of uses.
Okay. And what is it about this? I mean, Mr. Mayhew was referring to number of parking spaces, number of truck, and previous testimony was talking about, well, we're going to be storing trucks here. Tell me, you, in your professional opinion, what, what do you think makes it a truck terminal?
Well, I think it has elements of, of, of a truck terminal in the sense that when you look at the definition, as we described earlier, as an originating or terminating point for trucks, which may include services facilities and comfort facilities. And so we've already heard that, you know, you're going to be loading trucks at the port, bringing them to the location, unloading them, repackaging them, loading them back on the trucks for distribution to end users. And that is essentially what a truck terminal is. You're, it's a transshipment point. And so that's what this, the testimony provided about this is what this does. And so the fact that whether you have 5,000 square feet of warehousing or 130,000 square foot of warehousing, it's just allows you to have more onsite storage, but it's still the same process of trucks in processing and, you know, not making any changes to the, just repackaging, putting them back on trucks and out they go.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public that are not Hearthstone? Okay. Don't see any, so. You're finished? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
And our next witness is going to be Dr. Clay Emerson, and Jordan's going to question him.
Hey, we'll ask where you're in. Now, right here? Yeah.
I do. Yes, Clay Emerson, C-L-A-Y-E-M-E-R-S-O-N.
Well, they're getting that set up. I don't think I made my appearance earlier, so since I'm speaking now, Jordan Ash with Riker Danzig, representing the Hearthstone and Hillsborough Homeowners Association. All right, Dr. Emerson, would you please introduce yourself to the board and tell
Yes.
We did.
That's right. Yes, again, Clay Emerson, I'm from the consulting firm Princeton Hydro. Our main office is in Trenton, New Jersey. In short, my background, I have a bachelor's degree from Rowan University in Civil Engineering, a master's degree from Drexel University in Environmental Engineering, and a PhD from Villanova University with a focus in Water Resource Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. I'm a certified floodplain manager, and I've been doing consulting engineering work for, I think approximately 19 years, something like that.
And have you been qualified as an expert, testified before planning boards in the state of New Jersey previously?
Yes, I, I've testified before a number of boards across the state, including this one. And I'm also an adjunct professor at Villanova University.
All right, like to present Dr. Emerson, qualify him as an expert witness, expert engineer?
Any objections from the board? Hearing none, we accept, please continue.
All right. Dr. Emerson, have you had a chance to review the application that is pending before the board tonight?
Yes, I have.
And have you developed an opinion as to that application?
Yes, yes, I have developed an opinion that is summarized in part in my letter of, of May 22nd of 2023.
And in the interim from May 22nd, 2023, you do understand there's been additional testimony, additional submissions to this board with regard to this application, is that correct?
Correct.
And have you reviewed those submissions in that testimony?
I have, and I've been present at most of the hearings, with maybe the exception of the previous one, which I was able to watch.
Okay, and has, have, have those submissions and testimony substantively changed the opinions presented in your letter of May 22nd, 2023?
No, they haven't.
All right. Can you enlighten us a little bit on your opinion specifically as they relate to stormwater management?
Sure. And kind of at the beginning of this, I want to point out that from the applicant's engineer perspective, you know, a lot of work goes into this application, this submission. I understand that, I, I respect that. And in some ways, I kind of have the easy job. They did a lot of work, they did a lot of good work, but the issue here is they don't have to get most things right, they have to get everything right. And I think that there are still critical flaws in this application. And I think that the flaws that I see in this application, still after the testimony and revisions that you outlined, Jordan, there, there are issues that remain, and I think those issues are in part due to the unique characteristics of this property, this configuration, the natural configuration of this property, that do make it unique from perhaps other applications in the township. And, and those concerns are outlined in the May 2023 letter, and I'm sure we'll, we'll discuss those here momentarily.
Yeah, let's, let's go through that letter and your opinions, and let's, let's start off with the three performance standards under the stormwater management rule. Are you familiar with those standards?
I am.
Very briefly, can you enlighten us about those standards?
Sure. And we'll follow, like you said, the, the, the order of the, of the letter. So groundwater recharge is the first central one of three criteria that the application must comply with. And there's been a lot of discussion, previous testimony on this point, multiple site investigations were completed by the applicant, including one day where we were present. And I think what it boils down to, and this was discussed in detail in Mr. Ford's testimony, whenever that was, some time ago, what it boils down to is they, they disagree with the mapping, the soil mapping. And I think that that particular disagreement, if you will, or reclassification process that they've gone through, really, if we, if we take a step back, we realize that they, they have to be disagreeing with the USDA in one of two ways, in only one of two ways. So the way to explain this, I think, best is the facts are that the USDA maps realville and Penn soils on the property. That has not been, that's been supported by the application materials, that's been supported by Mr. Ford's testimony, we're all on the same page there. And the second fact of two is that the USDA defines both of these soil series as hydrologic soil group, or HSG, C soils. So those are, those are the two facts. So with that, with that backdrop, the applicant's engineer is disagreeing with, with one of those two facts, and saying that, no, these soils are actually D soils. And I want to point out that soil mapping is not, the soil maps that you view from the NRCS and USDA, the lines on those maps are not precise. And what I mean by that is if you were to draw that line that you see on the map in the field, and stand on one side of it and dig a hole, and stand on the opposite side of it, don't expect drastically different results. Those lines are not precise. In my experience, they're, they're, they're accurate, but the precision is not as sharp as the line looks on the map. So when they disagree with the classification, they're either disagreeing in one of two ways, again, just one. They're either disagreeing with the line on the map and saying, no, that line isn't here, that separates, for example, Penn soils from some other soil series. They're saying, you know, maybe, maybe it's, you know, 100 feet to the left and, and the map is technically wrong, the line should have been drawn there. That's one way that they can disagree with the map. The other way is they can dig a test pit and say, no, indeed, this is Penn soils. I don't disagree with the line on the map, I disagree with USDA that their opinion is that this soil series is a C. So you're either disagreeing with the line on the map, or you're disagreeing with the definition of the soil series. It has to be one or the other. And Mr. Ford was pressed on that question and asked, which, which don't you agree with? And I reviewed the testimony as recently as today, and I didn't, I didn't understand a clear answer. However, I reviewed the material, and their test pit logs, their soil profiles, the same profiles that they actually included in their November letter to DRCC are consistent with the USDA's description of these soils. So I'm left to conclude that they disagree, not with the line on the map about, you know, where the, the map unit was drawn, but with the root definition of the soil series. And to me, that's a much bigger pill to swallow. If Mr. Ford had said, well, actually, just off the property, there's this soil series, and it's a D, and really what we saw consistently, including the Chapter 12 BMP manual process, really looks like this other D soil that's right over here, and this is an unusual, or gave some kind of argument to that effect, but he did not do that. So it's a bigger pill to swallow, it's a taller hill to climb, and, and they did disagree with the core of the USDA's definition for both of these soil series, not simply where the line was drawn on the map, which perhaps I, I could have easier understood or agreed with. So that's kind of what the groundwater recharge boils down to, and I know we've heard a lot of discussion about it, and, and the issue at hand here is that if it's a D soil, technically they're not required to do any groundwater recharge provisions, and that's, that's the approach that they've, that they've taken. So that's my feeling on that. I don't know if, if that kind of summarizes what.
So just to, I guess, get to the, the, the meat of this here, does that, does that analysis, in your opinion, make the, make it so that this application does not comply with the recharge performance requirement in the stormwater management regulation?
Yeah, I, I still haven't seen convincing evidence that they're, they're D soils. I mean, they, in, in places, they note redoxymorphic features are evidence of seasonal high groundwater table within 24 inches, and in other places, they don't. And, and also, it, it kind of further complicates some of the other aspects of the design. For example, I heard the point made by the township engineer about the constructed wetland, which is their primary, their central basin right there in the front edge of the property, and how the basin was, you know, is, is designed well below the seasonal high water table that they indicated, and that, you know, has, could have some implications on the functionality of that wetland basin and the, the retaining wall that essentially surrounds it.
And before we move on to the other performance standards, I, I, I think it's important to always talk for a minute about what we mean really by groundwater recharge and why it's an important performance standard, what, you know, what if, if we don't do it right, what is the result?
Sure. Yeah, that's the most important part of the discussion. So the groundwater recharge criteria is, is the only one of the three that we're going to discuss that actually addresses the, the volume of stormwater runoff. The other ones, water quality and, and water quantity or peak flow control, don't, don't regulate or have any influence technically on the, on the amount of runoff that's going to be created. And when you take a forested site like this, on average, in the Mid-Atlantic, just to use rough numbers, we get about 40 inches of rain a year, usually a little bit more than that. And in this area, about 50% of that, 20 inches or more, between 50 and 60% of that rainfall never leaves the site, doesn't runoff in a forested condition, it soaks into the soil, and some of that soaks into the groundwater table and becomes what the state refers to as groundwater recharge, but most of that doesn't even make it there. It gets held in the soil, and the plants, the trees, roots, take it up and put it back up into the atmosphere, a process that, you know, is essentially invisible to us. But what's, what's surprising to most when I show, talk about those numbers, or when you, when you look at them in detail, is the fact that that's over 20 inches of our 40 inches a year that is actually put back up into the atmosphere by the vegetation. So when you replace that with pavement, obviously, that water is running off, there's requirements, you need to put in basin, you need to put in stormwater controls, and one of those is you got to satisfy groundwater recharge. And it doesn't mean you have to put 20 inches of water back into the ground, that's not the way that, this, the regulations work. You just have to put the amount in that the state believes is actually recharging the groundwater, and actually getting away from those plants, getting into the groundwater table, where it can be used by, you know, domestic wells nearby, recharge wetlands nearby, recharge headwater streams, provide constant base flow during periods of drought. And so that's why we have those rules, and when you, when you don't comply with them, you're, you know, you're not accomplishing those goals.
All right, and one more thing before we go on to another performance standard, just going to give you an opportunity to highlight any other aspects of the groundwater recharge analysis that you find not, not satisfying the regulation.
No, I think, I think for me, the, the main thing is, is the insistence on the, on the reclassification, and the fact that, as I understand, both their application and the direct and cross from Mr. Ford, it's not the, the lines on the map that they disagree with, they, they disagree with the core definition of both soil series, which I just, again, is, is a, is a bigger burden.
Okay, and, and on that, just help me to understand, when you say they disagree with the core definition of these types of soils, is that because the data that we show, that we see is consistent with those types of soils, or is there, is there something I'm missing?
No, that's exactly right. The, the data that they've provided is consistent with those soils. And so, you know, while, while I don't think Mr. Ford, again, And so, you know, while, while I don't think Mr. Ford, again, gave a direct question, a direct answer to that question, based on the cumulative application materials that have been submitted to date, that's the conclusion, the only conclusion that one can come to.
Right. Now, as I promised, we can move on to a different performance standard. Can you tell us a little bit about the water quality performance standard, what it is and why it's important?
Sure. Water quality, as its name implies, a little more straightforward. They, the state has requirements to treat stormwater runoff specifically from what's now called motor vehicle service surfaces. So this is impervious cover, but different from rooftop impervious cover. The theory being that the ground level impervious cover that is, that experiences vehicle, vehicular traffic, is likely to have a, a bigger burden in terms of water quality and therefore needs to be treated. And with the recent, relatively recent rule change to, you not only need to treat water quality, but you need to treat it with a certain approach that the state defines as green infrastructure. And that, those rule changes will, or have changed the approach that this particular application took and, and most applications as well. So the state simplifies the water quality process and just says you need to use a certain type of structure. They list them and you have, they use as a proxy total suspended solids and they assign a total suspended solids removal rate to different treatment devices. So it's kind of a, a little simpler in some aspects compared to groundwater recharge or peak flow control, in that all you really need to get correct is understand your drainage areas, make sure they're not greater than 2.5 acres, that's a new limit, and use an approved system, BMP, best management practice, or where you'll hear the term MTD or manufactured treatment device. So it's kind of just a plug in the right thing and enough of them and make sure they work and that box is checked. But in this case, while they have plugged in the appropriate MTDs, it's, it's my opinion that they're not going to work as, as they're designed. And I'm, I'm happy to explain that further. So I'll explain that further. So what I'll do, I do have an exhibit up at the moment. This is sheet four of 11 of the exhibits that I provided. Are we gonna, this was provided and we're going to mark it?
I think this, this, we did submit this to the, to the board and the clerk. I'm not sure if we marked them though.
Excuse me. Purpose of the record, Mr. Emerson, can you indicate what O1 represents?
Yes. So this is a screenshot, a snippet, completely unadulterated, you know, un, unmodified. There's no additions to this. It's just a cropped version of Sheet 7 of the latest revision, September 26, 2023, site plans. So this is a zoomed in view of the, I guess, what we would call the north parking area. And you can see some truck parking along the, on the north side of the northern parking area. And the reason I show this is the things I want to point out, rather. First, you see the parking spaces I mentioned. You see the, the edge of the building at the bottom. And then, within the parking, you see two proposed contours that are labeled 77 and then flowing downstream 76 closer to the curb at the end of the parking stalls. And that's important for reasons that I'll talk about. And then you also see at the very end, kind of in the center, is an inlet that's labeled CB number one. Perhaps you could see that. I'm not going to mark this up unless I need to. And then there's a series of four shaded rectangles that are, you know, two on each side of that inlet. And there's a second inlet labeled CB number one A to the west, to the left. And if I go to, what I'm going to do now is go to the next sheet of O1, Sheet 5 of O1. And now I've, now I've added things to this drawing. So the seven blue arrows here are my own addition. And these are meant to depict the drainage patterns of runoff under the proposed, you know, the developed condition. And these aren't randomly drawn. They're, I just chose to, to draw seven just to, the number was somewhat random, but the direction is what I want to talk about. These flow arrows, you'll see one thing that's consistent with them here. They're all perfectly perpendicular to those proposed contours. So where, where a blue arrow crosses the 76 and 77 contours, it should cross it at a 90-degree angle. And that's not a coincidence. That's how we, how we do this. That's the direction that water flows. It flows downhill. And downhill is perpendicular to these topographic contours. That's central to my point. So if there's a question on that, or if that's not clear, hopefully it is. Yes. Oh, yes.
No, I, I think, what, what's up here now is a PDF. There are 11 pages on this PDF and it's been introduced sort of out of order. So I'm trying to think the best way to clear it up.
I think, I think his question, if I may, is the Sheet 7 is the reference to the original, the, the, the current plan set, the applicant's plan set. So this is Sheet 5 of O1, but it contains a snippet of the plan set Sheet 7. Yep. So it's the same snippet from the Sheet 4 of O1, repeated here again.
So just, just to clarify for the record, what Clay's referring to is O1, and if we're going to have it be O1, that's fine, is the whole PDF that was submitted to the board, not just the one sheet that was up there a minute ago.
I think we, we're going to number each sheet individually.
Each sheet individually?
Yeah.
Okay. So then this one up here now, which is PDF, page five of the PDF that was submitted, will be O2. Yes. This is the marked up.
Okay. So O2, Page 5, Sheet 7. What's not, yeah. Okay. So anyway, the, the flow lines are perpendicular to the proposed contour. So what you have here is a parking lot that is concave. It's not just a simple cross slope going along the curve. You have flow that is converging. So if you were here on a, during a, a heavy downpour and standing right in the middle of that V that the 76 contour makes, your, your feet would be wet. Water is coming at you from both angles and flowing north to the, to the curb line. And if you follow that flow path to the curb line, you'll find that there's an inlet there. And that's a problem, in my opinion, based on my review of the plans and the details, because the way these systems are designed, according to the details and the plans, is that water will flow along the curb line, collect along the curb line, and flow in one direction or another. And before it gets to an inlet, these shaded rectangles here have a depressed curb. And you can see that on, in the, in the plan set, I think on Sheet 15. So the way these are intended to work is the water flows off, she flows off the parking lot, hits the curb, flows down the gutter line, and flows into one of these manufactured treatment devices that's going to clean the water up. And then it soaks through soil and vegetation as required by the DEP with these BMPs, these rectangles that you see here. And then there's a pipe at the bottom of these that then takes the treated runoff to the inlet. So the idea is it goes from the pavement to the gray rectangle, then to the inlet, by design, and, and as required. But instead, and now we're going to introduce O3, which is Sheet 6 of the PDF, contains the same snippet from Sheet 7 of the plans, has both the green, the blue flow lines consistent with O2, and now has an added red triangle that delineates the drainage area to that inlet at the curb line. So all the runoff, if this is built per design in this red triangle, is never going to have a chance to get to one of those four rectangles, because it's concentrated, it's concave, the flow is converging and going straight to the inlet and effectively bypassing the, the treatment units. This was described, not in this graphical detail, in the May letter from over a year ago. It was asked of the applicant's engineer. And to my, to my knowledge, it hasn't been addressed. And I, I don't see how these systems, and by the way, I just am showing the northern parking lot, but the same issue exists on the, the parking lot to the right of the building on that lower curb towards the property frontage. So this is just an example. This is not the only place that this occurs in the, in the application.
So in your opinion, does this aspect of the design make the stormwater management plan not complying with the water quality standard under the New Jersey regulation?
Right. The New Jersey regulation simply says, you got to treat it. It's got to go through the appropriate soil and vegetation BMP, i.e. gray rectangle here. And if you look at the grading plan and think about how water flows and how this is actually configured, a good portion of that parking lot, along with the other parking lot, will, will simply bypass the inlet, not, and not, not achieve the treatment that's required and, and therefore not, not be compliant.
Right. And we've done two performance standards. I believe there's a third, done recharge and water quality. Is peak flow the third performance standard?
It is. So the term water quantity or peak flow control is the third. The third, and as this, as far as this application is concerned, is certainly, certainly the most important of the three, in my professional opinion. And I guess, sticking with the theme that we just talked about in, in this figure, O3 here, I want to introduce another exhibit. And bear with me. It would be, I guess we'll call this O4.
This is a different sheet, so why don't you tell us about what we're presenting now?
Sure. And this is Page 7, for those of you following along on the PDF, O4. This is another unmodified screenshot taken from the proposed drainage area map, last revised September 28, 2023. So this is the, the latest plan set. And the drainage area map is, you know, from my standpoint, one of the, probably one of the most important pieces of, of any application, especially this one. And this is a, again, a zoom in specifically of the property frontage. So what you see kind of centered in that view is the, the constructed wetland basin that's surrounded by a retaining wall that is in between the building and Weston Road. And directly across the street is, is the Hearthstone Clubhouse facilities. And from my discussion on the previous exhibits related to water quality, I talked about water flows perpendicular to contours. And that's especially true in a paved area where, you know, we have good control over exactly how the pavement is sloped. And what you see here is there's, obviously, it's a little busy here, but you can see the proposed contour. So if we look on like the left-hand side driveway, you see a series of contours that go from, at, near Weston Road. And I realize you can barely see it, but there are straight lines that cross the road, almost perpendicular, that start at 62. And as it goes off the image, goes up to about 74 or more. So that's a, you know, you know, in that distance, you're driving, if you were to enter the, the site on this side, you'd be driving, you know, 12 feet up in elevation. And you can see the straight contours going across the road. On the right-hand side of the image, you're starting at about 65 is the lowest I see on the entranceway, and you're going up to about 78. So again, 12 or more feet up on that side. But what's important about this figure, and the reason that I show it, is the dark dashed lines. So again, I apologize, it's a little busy. There's dash lines. My cursor's not too, too easy to see. Is it okay if I mark this up temporarily as if it were a laser pointer to point to things, to get clearer? So the line, the dark dash lines that I'm talking about, I'm kind of coloring in red over here, are these lines. It's not much clearer, but, so those are the drainage area divides. In other words, water that lands, according to this drainage area map, water that lands on one side of that dark dash line is going to flow into the basin. And the very edges, according to this map, if, if rainfall lands in this entranceway, you know, they, the basin doesn't pick that up. It, it runs out into the road. And again, that's, that's by design. My issue with this map, and the reason I bring it up here, is that those dark dash lines aren't accurate. And so what I'll do now is I'm going to go to the next sheet of this, which is, will be Page 8, and we'll call O5.
That's right.
And here, I've added the same blue lines. And the purpose of these blue lines is the same as it was in the other exhibit, O2, in that these are blue lines that are drawn perpendicular to the proposed contours. So water is going to run, is going to flow off this pavement perpendicular from one contour to the next. It, it doesn't know anything about those dark dash lines, right? Those are just lines on this plan. They're not anything in real life. And if you draw perpendicular lines, simply, on both entrance drives, you'll see that water from almost the entire width of the road, depending on where and what side you're looking at, isn't going to be captured by those two inlets that are on, that are on either side of, of the road. There's an inlet here. And on the right side, there's an inlet here. But if you follow a perpendicular path on both sides, if you just draw a perpendicular line to these, from one proposed contour to the next, you'll see that water just is going to flow right over those dash lines. And so you might say, well, that seems like a detail. What's the big deal? Well, that basin, you know, a central assumption here is that, number one, it's going to work and be maintained and all those things. But another central assumption is that it's going to actually capture the area that it's designed to capture. And what might look, you know, quick inspection good on a proposed drainage area map, if this is actually built as the pavement is, is shown, this, there's a significant area here that's not going to be captured by either of these two inlets. It isn't going to be captured by the, the basin. It isn't going to be attenuated. And it's going to flow across the street and, and towards the Hearthstone community, unattenuated, untreated. And, and, and that's a problem. That's a non-compliance. So, so that's the other issue as it relates to, that's, that's the first issue as it relates to peak flow control, because their calculations assume that this drainage area does get into the basin. And a review of the proposed drainage area map quickly tells you that it, that it won't.
So, in the, in the testimony you just gave, and this is, help me to understand what's going on here. What you're saying is, the water, and I don't want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth at all, but if, because the water is not going where they say it's going, their calculations are inaccurate. Is that correct, or is there something different that I'm missing?
No, that, that's simple and to the point. If, if the water isn't captured by the basin, it can't be controlled by the basin. And their calculations assume that it is captured by the basin, and it is controlled by the basin. But their drainage area map and their proposed grading disagrees with their calculations.
So does, does that aspect alone make it non-compliant under the peak flow standard?
Yes, I mean, it means that they haven't demonstrated that it's, it's compliant because their calculations aren't consistent with their, their plans.
Okay, and are there any other issues with the peak flow analysis as presented?
Yes. And I think the next one is kind of central, and, and definitely the, the biggest flaw that I see in this, in this application as it's currently presented. So while the basin won't capture these perimeter areas around both entrance drives, it is going to capture a lot of other area of the site, I want to be clear about that. And in fact, in my opinion, it's capturing too much of the, the rest of the area. And that might sound counterintuitive at first, but I will explain, and I'll do so with yet another exhibit.
So we're up to O5, and this is a different one, so I'll explain what we're looking at?
Yeah, this one, I think this will be-
Oh, O6, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
And I, this is the first page of the PDF. And so O6, first page of the PDF, is again, a snapshot of the existing drainage area map, last revised September 28th, 2023. And this isn't as much of a zoom in here, this is displaying the entire limit of disturbance. You know, the entire proposed building would be in this, this is the existing conditions. So you don't see a building, you don't see a driveway. What you see is Weston Road, what you see is portions of the Hearthstone community. You also see, let's see if this works. You also see the Hearthstone basin footprint generally in this area here. And other, again, no change to this, this is an unmodified snapshot from the existing drainage area map. And what's important here, again, just like it was in the last exhibit, is these drainage area delineations, which again, are kind of a bold dash line. And I know that there's a, a lot going on here as well, but specifically the bold dash lines that I'm talking about are these. And critically, this one that I've just kind of highlighted, that nearly cuts the site in half here. So what I'll do now, to try and make this exhibit a little clearer than it is here in just the simple black and white, is introduce a slightly modified version of the same, which I guess will be O7, and page 2 of the, of the PDF. So this is the same image, but I've added some, some color to it. And I have delineated my, my own opinion of the drainage areas. It's not materially different from what they did. My delineation maybe slightly disagrees with the center divide, but, you know, they're, 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 that's certainly not my issue with, with this, with this comment. So I generally agree that this red area does not drain under existing conditions. It does not cross Weston Road in the pipe that's right here in front of the Hearthstone Clubhouse. Instead, and critically, it flows this way. You know, every raindrop that lands in this red area flows this way and into this hatched area that is a, a regulated feature, state open water, wetland, or some combination of the two. I think it's state open water. And then there's a separate pipe under Weston Road that takes all the runoff from that red area and some other runoff, some other drainage area into the Weston Road detention basin that's directly across the street. And that's about, depending on how you slice and dice the numbers, over four acres of drainage area. About 4.2, according to my count, and they're a little bit different, but for all practical purposes, the same. And what's important is that 4.2 acres, that substantial portion of the site, never flowed through, doesn't now, and never has, from every document that I've seen, never flowed through the pipe that crosses Weston Road in front of the clubhouse. And that's important, and that's important for a couple, a couple of reasons. As I said, instead, it flowed through this wetland and into the, the basin across the street. That basin across the street was, when the Hearthstone development was approved, that basin was constructed, you know, they understood the drainage area to that basin, including the off-site drainage area from this same piece of property. And it was designed with a number of features, an outlet structure, it's a very, I've, I've seen it, it's a typical basin. It also has an emergency spillway, and that's important. An emergency spillway is exactly what it sounds like. It's, it's, when, when a bigger storm comes, or if the outlet structure gets clogged, or there's some kind of physical issue with the outlet structure, or simply when there's a bigger storm, and we know that there's, there's been a few of those, water can overflow, can exit this basin in a semi-controlled manner that's not gonna destroy the basin or destroy the other improvements on the property. The clubhouse, for example, the recreational facilities, for example. However, and I'll, I'll go now to what we'll call O8, on page 3, and it's the same, it's identical to O7 with the addition of the blue flow areas, which again, I've drawn perpendicular to the contours. And you'll see that they turn a little bit because it's not a uniform slope, there's, you know, some irregularities, natural irregularities on the site. You can see that this water does not flow to the clubhouse, it flows ultimately to the Hearthstone basin. And what the design is proposing to do is take that four point, roughly 4.2 acres, and take it away from the wetland, and take it away from the Hearthstone basin, and instead, connect it to the proposed basin that we just talked about, and convey it to the pipe that flows under Weston Road, makes a couple jogs, turns right, then left again, immediately adjacent to the clubhouse, and flow under some of their recreational facilities and out the retaining wall. And I think what's important to understand is that there is no emergency spillway under this scenario, right? There is no, you know, when a bigger storm comes, there is an emergency spillway on their basin that will discharge runoff into the road that will then flow by design across the road and towards the Hearthstone community. But the pipe itself, when that capacity is exceeded, you know, there is no, there is no guarantee, there is no emergency spillway, no controlled way to allow larger storms to exit and not cause damage or a threat to public safety along the way. So there's no provisions to ensure stability. And in my experience, this is a unique condition, and this is a unique aspect of this property. And, and this is what we're here to talk about, this was not a requirement. In other words, what I mean by that is the applicant's engineer wasn't required in any way, shape, or form to divert, to intentionally divert this runoff to a new location, to a privately owned closed pipe system immediately adjacent to their, the Hearthstone community's clubhouse and recreational facilities, and away from a stormwater management basin with a emergency spillway that was designed in part to handle this area, this drainage area. So that was a design decision that was made, for, for whatever reason, by the applicant's engineer. And I do have some, some ideas on, on, on what dictated that decision that I'll, I'll get into later. But in, in my experience, and in my professional opinion, and, and, and directly from the stormwater rules, and, and I'll quote, "All stormwater management plans shall be designed to, number one, reduce flood damage, including damage to life and property, and protect public safety through the proper design and operation of stormwater management basins." So this is a design choice that was made by the applicant. The, the unique characteristics of the site with the two drainage areas could have been maintained. There could have been two separate system, ones that drained in the red, in the direction of the existing wetland and the basin, and one that still conveyed some portion of the site to the, the pipe where it currently goes. But their design approach here, and, and their design choices fly in the face of the goals set forth in, in 7:8, specifically to reduce flood damage, including damage to life and property.
I'm just gonna chime in here, we're talking about really important stuff, and I, and I want to make sure it's all heard. I know that we were expecting to end at 10, it's a little past 10 now. I see some people looking at the clock, so if we're gonna go on, you know, I'd, I'd want to be sure that we're gonna do that, but if we're gonna stop, I want to stop.
Depends on how much time-
I, I don't think he's gonna finish in the next couple of minutes. I don't think we have a, you know, another hour left, but I think we have more in a couple of minutes.
We can do it in two minutes.
What's that?
We can do it in two minutes?
I don't, I don't think he's gonna finish in two minutes, no.
So then we should end at this point.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Grognick made a request that his client's application be given a large amount of time on an upcoming board application. And I indicated to him that I would at least raise the issue with the board. The next date that falls in that category is September the 5th.
So, you know, the MLU all gives the board 120 days to file, to decide if it completed an application. That'll be over 1,000 days. So I've never requested a special meeting, I don't necessarily want to begin that practice, but when we consented to additional time, you know, we're on 884 days right now. We were assuming we'd get more than an hour, so that Mr. Emerson can finish, but here we are. So, you know, you're putting the applicant in a, in a, a bit of an impossible position. Because the case law reads, and I, I do have it here, that obviously the objectors have an opportunity to present their case, the public has an opportunity. But we're, you know, gonna be seven, eight times past the statutory deadlines. So I just want to finish this application. Mr. Emerson, I don't know how much longer you need, we have Mr. Ford to rebut the testimony, and then we have public comment, I think we can do that in one meeting? We, we do want to have some closing argument, but I'm not, you know-
Let me, let me make sure we have, we have Mr. Emerson's direct testimony to be finished, your cross-examination, the board's examination, the public's examination. It is my understanding, and Mr. Sinkevich and Mr. Ash can correct me, that they intend to call three lay witnesses in support of their position with the, with the concurrent examination, cross, et cetera. Your, my understanding is you intend to call Mr. Ford as a rebuttal witness, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you intend to call Mr. Coys and Mr. Mayhew?
I reserve the right to, but I'm not sure at this point. But we're- I think we need a special meeting before September.
Well, the problem-
We're gonna go into the third year of the hearing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll point this out, the way the calendar falls, Mr. Chairman, is you're only gonna have one meeting in July, which you have the longer running warehouse application. And I'm not sure, and I think Mr. Tarantino will correct me, we haven't even gotten to objector's presentation yet on that application. Next week is obviously already scheduled. Fourth of July is Thursday, so you are not having your usual second meeting. I will indicate to the board that the normal 4th Thursday in July, I will be away. And the board's position has generally been to make me come to these meetings. As long as I have been the board attorney, and as long as I have been in this era of the board, since Mr. Coys likes that word today, the board has never met in August. So the first meeting in September is September the 5th, which would be the next meeting, of which there is an application right now for a subdivision. We could basically advise the applicant that they've got 45 minutes and the rest of the evening is Mr... But frankly, we're not gonna finish, with all due respect, we're not gonna finish on the 5th, but we do need to move it along. And as for why it has taken so long, I'm not gonna get into a long- The board's sat through these hearings, they take a while because they take a while. Nobody has slowed this process down at any point along the way. So-
But why, why are other applications getting priority?
They're not getting priority, they're getting simply moved because they've been sitting in the queue. The longstanding applications are not getting priority, only to the extent that the one which has been here longer than yours hasn't yet even finished direct testimony yet. And they're only gonna get to share a portion of the next meeting thereafter with two of your applications in September. So the board is trying to juggle the fact that there are applications before the board that have nothing to do with the word warehouse. There are other obligations, including in affordable housing. You have had, your office has an application before the board next Thursday night, not related to this one, as well as the board has an affordable housing application it's trying to finish. The board, I believe, Mr. O'Grognick, is giving your client and the opportunity to move this process along. The only issue that came up tonight was an applicant, frankly, who's been in the queue, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coys since February, that was heard tonight. Which took all of an hour and 20 minutes. So, your call. You know what the op, the option is. And I don't think you want to be in any, if you think the thing is slow now, here, I don't have to tell you what it is going on in Flemington right now, which is where Judgment, and apparently has been designated as the punished party for all the prerogative writ cases, of which there are mis- for the board's evocation, there is a number somewhere between 75 and 90 pending prerogative writ cases dating back to '21. So, the offer, Mr. O'Grognick, is September, September the 5th.
What choice do we have?
Well, there are choices, but I'm just saying-
There's really not a choice.
To continue that hearing, I think at that point, if the board wants to consider the possibility of a special meeting thereafter, the board can do so. The board chairman, however, his position has generally been, we have tried not to use the business meetings for applications, but the board may consider such a request when we return after Labor Day.
Yeah, because right now, we're using that time to move along the master plan. So I think until that is complete, we're not gonna be entertaining that business meeting.
Dr. Emerson available on the 5th? Dr. Emerson available on the 5th?
Were you talking about that? I believe that he is moving some plans around.
Mr. Bash, Mr. Sinkevich, your other witnesses will be here. And if Mr. O'Grognick, et cetera, is done with Ms. Dr. Emerson, they're up next.
My understanding of schedules is people are available on that day. I will note that this has been going a while, and we are trying to move this along. I am not trying to slow this down at all. But we are talking about a site plan that was amended as recently as September of last year. So this hasn't been just sitting.
Nope.
Alone since two years ago. So we are trying to move this as well, but I just wanted to be clear on what we're doing.
Board is well aware of how this process, this process and the others have moved.
And we're going to extend the time of decision.
Correct.
To one.
What's the date that's the hearing?
September the 5th.
September the 6th.
It's always fun at every meeting. Mr. Chairman, the motion is to continue this application to Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter. As the matter may be heard, I'll indicate, gentlemen, that I will advise counsel for the applicant currently scheduled, that they will have till 8 o'clock. At that point, it's yours, depending on where we are. If the board wants to continue the application past 10:00, it can. It's within its purview, but we will start honor before 8 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to continue this until September, 30th, September 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, without further notice.
And time of decision extends to September 6th.
Decision rule has been extended to September the 6th.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Wagner seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Siradowitz, yes, Scobbo.
Yes.
Minimi Lepani.
Yes.
Mr. Mary Gurelli.
Yes.
Chair Sriraj.
Yes. And just a reminder, we do have a planning board meeting next week, June 13th, at 7:00 PM. So as always, if anyone's unable to make it, please notify.
And you have two, at least two applications before the board, including Mr. O'Grognick's return for an application not deemed warehouse.
Okay.
And you're first.
Sherman, the affordable housing application.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
Aye, we see everyone next week.
Everybody.
Have a good weekend.